We're on that property just to the woods. So they could hear that.
That's the one.
Okay, that's probably where. Jared's, because Jared was on that place too. I was over by the farm. Jared sent me a text. He says, "Hey, maybe you should get me your shot." Because they were sitting together.
There we go.
Yeah, it's not over here. You can't see it over here.
Well, we have a paper one.
It's fine.
We have a paper one, so we can go with the paper one.
It would be hard to scroll, because you won't be able to see. Jared was going, "So I'll go over there in a little bit." Let me sit for a while. Then a buck came through.
Does that mean that the counties have a paper agenda?
And so they had two down. So then they went down to get in the truck. And his brother Larry showed up. And they were in there. Kevin sent a text. "We've seen another deer." A minute later. And that's when Mary got the box.
We never usually have one at the other place.
So wild.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
We did real well. I mean, we...
At this time, I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Adams County Area School District, home of the Green Devils, to order. Has a meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has been.
For those of us that could rise, please face the plate for pleasure allegiance.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the gun, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
With that, I need to motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Joanne? Motion to adopt the agenda made by Jim, second by Joanne. Discussion? Hearing done, we'll start this vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
My vote is yes. It passes 9-0. Nobody signed up for public comments. We'll move on to Board of Education reports. Anyone? Last month, I was not here, but I did watch the meeting live. Thank you, Jim, for filling in. You did a great job. There was a discussion on school forests. People didn't read the article. The school forests were in the School Board Association magazine. One of the things I really liked about, they talked about four different programs. One of the things they talked about was earmarking that money before and have something specific to do with that money, so it just doesn't go back to the general fund. And I think that would be a great idea. So in the future, I'd like maybe to have that discussion where we would, if it goes to, now one school uses it for building improvements, but we could use it from anywhere to help fund sports to whatever, as long as we have a plan for that. Because it's really money we don't normally put into the budget either. It's just an idea that maybe as the next one comes around, we could do something like that. Any other reports from the board?
Hearing done.
Jeff has one.
I want to piggyback. I read the same article. You know, we came from the Stevens Point School District, which has a very, very strong school forest program. Everything from, you know, interpretive education. I mean, they have buildings. They have a lot of things going on. They even have one person dedicated to that facility. It's definitely something to reach for, and I would, you know, Rick's suggestion is something to look at. If you want to see a school forest program, though, I would encourage the board members to go up to Stevens Point and visit that facility and see how they do things. Put that on your wish list.
If you don't mind, ironically, there was something that came from the State School Forest Association today that I sent out to some of our principals and have already been corresponding with one of our high school science teachers about a couple of those projects he's interested in. So there's some resources available outside of the district that we might be able to utilize to try to use our school forests as outdoor educational environments.
Well, I think at one point, DNR would give every fifth grader or fourth grader a tree to plant. And it's been a long time since I think even our district has planted trees here. And I think that we may be under utilizing our forest as much land as we have. That was one reason why I brought up the fact that maybe we should give some of that to the county. Well, with the county, you don't get all that pulping land. You can just get 85%. 10% goes back to township, and 5% goes back to the county if they use it to purchase more land. So it's just an idea. I think that we just look at that a little bit more down the road. Oh, I'm supposed to remind everybody to speak into the microphone, including myself, I guess. Moving on. AFE report.
I think the principals are going to report together this month, really all talking about the same information. I believe recently, Michelle sent you a document, very recently, that will describe some of the data that they're going to report on regarding how we did, how we felt we engaged with students and families when we were in NTI the last time around Thanksgiving.
So we're going to strictly focus on our attendance piece for our NTI. I am going to let you know that we have all surveyed our staff, and we'll be looking at their thoughts and needs over the next few days. If we have to go to NTI again, what's going to make it a little bit more effective for them. We are also in discussions regarding what we want to know from families if, for supports. So that is also an ongoing discussion that we're having. As for the elementary, we went pre-K through four, obviously. As a district-wide, our NTI is supposed to be day one, which would have been Tuesday, is strictly calling families and letting them know what the schedule will be. But I think many of the teachers in the district, they can change me if I'm wrong, chose to make those contacts earlier because we knew we were going to NTI early enough. So we started officially on that Tuesday right away with some non-traditional instruction. So for my pre-K, which only went Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we had 72% attending. And they take attendance usually in the morning. In the afternoon, we have two sessions that they look at. Remember, that doesn't include, our three-year-olds were invited, but they weren't necessarily online with everybody else. Kindergarten, we were at 85%, and again, they took attendance twice a day. First grade was 82% in attendance. Second grade was our biggest with 91% attendance. Third was 81%, and fourth grade was at 88% with an overall attendance of, for AF Elementary, is 85%. Did very well on Tuesday and Wednesday during that week. We learned a few things, and we'll make some changes for next time.
Thank you. I'll be speaking to the middle schools. And if you look along the left-hand margin there, first off, a couple of things to note. As you look at our attendance, the middle school meets throughout the course of the day, and students actually attend all day long for the most part. So from 8:30 until 10:30, three days a week for all students. They're in their first block. We also run health, two days a week for seventh and eighth graders. That goes from 10:35 to 11:05. All students are on a break until 12:05, and then they continue until 12:20. The way that that happens is the instruction is facilitated throughout the day. Our teachers are getting much more tech savvy, and they're learning how to put students into breakout rooms, so students can sit into breakout rooms. Teachers pop in, and then they give students individual feedback, either in small groups or one-on-one throughout the course of the day. Our fifth grade had about, almost 89% attendance overall average. Sixth grade was 81 and a half. Seventh grade, 85. And eighth grade, 76. A couple of things to note as well. So overall, we were at 83%. We looked at our attendance for our first NTI round, where we were all off for a few days. We were at 87% then. We did see, and when conferring with students, some students went on vacation and did other things. So that was part of the reason that we thought we saw a drop. Additionally, one other thing that we looked at was NTI when we went into emergency, like cohort attendance. So you can see that. That's about 87% attendance, too. And that happens very quickly. A class could go home in the morning, and they might jump on in the afternoon. So we've gotten really pretty skilled at doing that now, to support and continue the learning. Just so you have a little bit of a frame of reference, right now, we're back in full swing over the last week, and even today, we're at about 93% attendance. So that's the average right now when we're in the healthy state. Okay?
And Michelle, when you said, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When you talk, your numbers, is that the, basically the same kids are missing out of that group? Or is that one kid will miss one day, somebody else another day? I'd be worried about if a child was missing those total two weeks of time.
Oh, absolutely. So what happens is during that break, in the middle of the day, and at the end of the day, we have our teachers reaching out to students if they didn't know that it was a planned absence as to why they were going to be gone. And then the intention also is, is that if we have a student that's missing, they reach out to our student service team. We did drops with materials for students that didn't have materials, or we would even do home visits to check in on them, to see if they're engaged. So that's just part of our practice, and that happens all the time.
So would you say that probably over 95% of the kids were at least contacted or were checked on during that time, or had some sort of work?
Yes, I would say that. I'd have to look to give, like, exact numbers, sure, but...
You know what, we're reaching out and seeing where you're getting everybody.
Everybody, we're always reaching out. That's part of our practice as a group, even now. So a student doesn't come, we were talking today, even Crystal and I, if a student doesn't show up or respond, or a parent doesn't acknowledge a three-day, like, every day we call if we don't see them for attendance. When we don't see them for three days, we do a home visit.
Okay.
Okay? So there's different things. Or we're doing a wellness check, all right, whether through our school resource officers or through our social workers. So we have a process in place that we're all on the same page for.
So I was asking, I had the same question Rick asked, wrote down. Is any of it the same kid missing the entire time, the entire week?
There might be a couple, but those are students we are struggling to engage otherwise.
Okay.
So...
Is it because they possibly didn't have internet access?
There were a couple of students who didn't have internet access, but we made materials available to them, and then we did other things with them.
Okay. Thank you.
I will say, I wanted to mention, because Kevin and I talked about this, if we have to go into it again, we've talked a little bit about providing a session or opportunities for students to come in for certain groups if we know. We have, you know, those families have reached out to us. So could they come into the library, or could they come into the cafeteria for a short period of time, and we can get things ready for them? So, because we're at the school, and we can support them.
Michelle, you had mentioned that students potentially were on vacation during that time period. Do you think Thanksgiving and potentially even deer hunting impacted your numbers?
Yeah, I know so. Yeah. I had a, yes, I didn't say that, but I was...
It's okay. It's reality.
Yeah, deer hunting definitely did. I had a couple that left the state, so, and they would send notes to us indicating that's why they weren't on virtually. So definitely.
I'm kind of going to go to Lucas or Kathy. Do you have anything you need to ask?
No, but I would just like to say to Michelle, thank you for sending out your reports. I enjoy receiving them and seeing what you are sending out to parents. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kevin?
And I'm going to bet that some of the high school students participated in class from the deer stand. That one nice thing about virtual instruction. At the high school, we had an odd situation that is unique to the high school with the trimester ending and trimester starting right between the two weeks. We saw lower attendance, 87% to 90% attendance at the end of that trimester. I think kids probably knew what they were going to get, and knew what they could do, and felt like they had it under control, where attendance increased then once we started the trimester on December 1st. So we ended up with a high of about 92% attendance one day, but stayed around that 90%, which is typical of our attendance. I think typically, it's probably 92 or 93 on average. So we were close. Our day was still meeting in the three periods. So if a kid missed one hour, it's marked on here, but it's a little different than with a middle or elementary school. So they could attend two of their class periods and miss one. We did one-hour classes, and then in the afternoon, students would be requested for group work, or they could work on extension activities from their morning class. Special ed students had meetings with their teachers to provide service minutes. So teachers were busy in the afternoon planning and meeting with kids, and we have a tracking document for that as well. But we, I was pleasantly surprised with the numbers with our first attempt at NTI as a building, and we are looking for ways to improve, like Roxy and Michelle stated, using that staff survey to see what we need to do, how we can better prepare, make sure we have students engaged. So it was a good learning experience. I'm definitely glad we had a little chance to plan for it, and then we'll be better when we do it again.
Jeff? Aaron, so you said that you're going to do a survey for the staff. What about students?
We've talked about a student survey. I want to put one together. I'm just concerned, I want to make sure the question is accurate, so it's going to take some time to put together, to see what worked for them. But some teachers did survey students and parents to get a feel for how they wanted the NTI to go, or what supports they needed. So we're going to build off that, and we might either do it as a teacher, by teacher basis, or as a whole student survey.
I mean, I've said all along, you know, NTI is, to me personally, I mean, I obviously have two different age students, different levels of participation, I will put it that way. And my concern is always getting them engaged. What trips their trigger to make them want to come to school in a non-traditional manner other than sitting in bed and taking an extra nap between classes, or whatever the case may be, or doing those things that they can't do in class, but they can do in their bedroom or office or whatever, you know, setting that they're trying to teach or trying to learn. What things, I guess my other question is, what other things would you do differently in each grade setting to improve the process? Or are there tools that you need from us as a board to provide you, to make you more successful?
So I'll go first for the high school. What we found out was finding the sweet spot in the amount of time that students need to be on the device with a teacher with an actual lesson going on. 55 minutes felt a little short, but based on the staff survey, with about 30 staff responding, a lot of staff liked that amount so that they had time to do the individual and group work in the afternoon. And kids can engage for that long. They're worried that the kids won't engage for 90 minutes, or it'll be tough. A lot of kids don't like to turn their camera on, so it's difficult for a teacher to get feedback from a student that you would get in person, knowing, oh yeah, they're getting it. You can see that, the visuals, to see that the light bulb went off. You don't have that with NTI. So using the chat feature, and teachers are building their repertoire, a repertoire of tools and strategies that way. The other thing we might do, because students in the high school, believe it or not, have a hard time waking up at 8:15, even though it should be easy to do. So we, instead of having them miss the morning class and make it up in the afternoon, or try to meet with their teacher in the afternoon, shifting the hours a little bit so the morning can be some planning and individual time for those kids that are raring to go in the morning, and then push it back just to nine o'clock. Let, make sure they're on when the class is on, instead of, you know, miss the class and then try to make that up later. So that's some of the things we're talking about, probably lengthening the class a little bit, shifting hours around, and then making sure, the other part of our survey was seeing what staff needed, what tools do they need. So we heard a lot of good things, like basically, teachers need a, they need the helpline when technology isn't working. They need to know who they can talk to, or when they get done with the class and they have an idea, they want to know, what can I do to make this better? They want, they need a person to call or talk to. So those are some of the high school things.
Based on my staff survey, one of the things that they wanted was a more of a letter sent home to families regarding expectations for what the kids need to be doing at home. The high school wants to sleep later. We still have kids, even in the elementary school, that are not quite up yet when we begin. So it was a letter to families, letting them know what their expectations are, because that seemed to be a concern of staff. The other concern that they have is they need some training on technology, breakout rooms, Zoom meetings, and document cameras. So we've got that scheduled already. And then, how do we get kids to attend? So we're talking about some incentives that we can offer students to get online and to want to be there, because even at the elementary school, even though it's a lot of family-oriented stuff, that it's the family typically who needs to log them on or sit with them. We want the kids to maybe hound those families and say, "Look, I'm trying to get on. I got to get on. I have a meeting. I want to learn," those kinds of things. So that's what came out of my staff survey.
And from our staff survey at the middle school, one of the things that's kind of unique is how we're set up already. We're set up so that we're synchronous and asynchronous all of the time, which means one teacher's teaching in their classroom, and kids are attending that lesson virtually with the support of another teacher. So over time, our teachers have gotten, when we have to send a group home, they're pre-recording their lessons. Some things that we learned is that if those lessons...
Michelle, can I just stop you, just so people understand? So when eighth grade math is occurring, the eighth grade math teacher is teaching math to his or her small group of students, but every other eighth grader is taking math in their cohort at the same time. So that's what she meant by synchronous and asynchronous. I just wanted to clarify, so people got a picture of what that looked like. I'm sorry.
Right, thank you, thank you. So one of the things that we've learned is that our teachers are pre-recording their lessons when we go into NTI. Or if we have a group of students who are quarantined, that class then starts to pre-record their lessons. And when they do that, they post their live, they post their content on their Google Calendar that kids can see. So if a student is home ill for the day, they can go on their Google Calendar, they can click on the lesson. At the same time, there's a live meet that they can get support in. So they watch their lesson. The teacher will share the screen, gives them support. They can go into the live meet and get support on that as well. So what we've learned is our teachers, some teachers are significantly type A, and they're planners, and they like to know what the next three lessons are going to be, because they're going to prepare, and they're going to help, and make sure that all of their students in their little cohort have exactly what they need, right? And then other people don't have that same type of personality, and they like a little more flexibility. So right now, we're talking about what is the right amount of time to post your lesson so that that teacher who's supporting that facilitation of that lesson feels very equipped. Okay? So that's one thing. Another thing is, is that some teachers ask for a homeroom. For instance, we met with sixth grade today. I said, "Do you guys want to have a homeroom at the beginning of the day at eight, before 8:30?" They said, "No, we're logged on at 8 o'clock. The kids are there from 8 to 8:30 talking." Marsha Clickle said to me, "They don't even leave during lunch. They just eat lunch with me, and they talk the whole time." So it depends on the different levels of grades here. Our fifth graders, their faces are on their screens all the time. They're engaged. It's just, they're not shy around the camera yet. As they get older, they're less inclined to be before the camera, right? Our teachers, as they get, they have gotten much better at facilitating breakout sessions. And what that looks like is if you're in your Google Meet, which you've all attended, they'll go ahead and they'll say, "Okay, I'm going to put you in a breakout room. We just did a math lesson. I'm going to put you in a breakout room with one other kid, or all by yourself. I'm going to pop in, I'm going to ask you if you have any questions." So then they hop in that room. Now it's like a one-on-one lesson, or a one-on-two lesson, whatever it is, and they're supporting the learning of that student. So that was a feature that came out, I think maybe two weeks before this NTI session happened. And most of us had it all figured out by then, but it was something that we were getting by the third, you know, that second four days that we had. So we're just getting better at refining our skills. And the only other thing is truly, we maybe have a handful of kids who've said internet is really challenging for us. So we need to figure out how we can advocate and support, or bring them in, or something like that, if it's a significant barrier. So that would be where we're at right now.
I guess I have a question. So if a staff is not quarantined or isolated during the NTI time, are they required, can they teach at home, or can, are they required to come into the buildings?
They were allowed, and if you want me to...
Go ahead.
They were allowed to teach from their homes. They, but they, like in our building, they had to go through our process of what you do when you request a sub, and if you're not, or if you are working in another building, there's a process within our Skyward and ASOP system. So they were asked to do that, and then they're asked to notify us where we can get ahold of them, if there's an immediate, like, need for us to get ahold, like, what's your best contact for the day? It was in my building, some grade levels were there every day. Some came on certain days when they all wanted to collaborate. It was different for different people. Some teachers said, "I don't want to be home at all. I need to be around others, and I like being in my classroom. I don't get to see people otherwise." That was my experience.
I have a question for Kevin. Have you entertained the idea of night classes? I was reading about other school districts that found that high school students, the group that they were missing, when they held evening hours, those students seemed to participate.
Yes, we had some teachers that would hold office hours. I know one of my child's teachers held office hours from 6 to 8 o'clock, so that those teachers, those kids could connect at least once during the week if they were only available at night. We really wanted to keep the students on the school schedule, so at this point, since we're only going for two weeks, we didn't want to necessarily say, okay, do stuff during the day and meet at night, because teachers also are on that schedule. I talked to a colleague this weekend who said they are trying, in a different district, they're trying to keep it as flexible as possible for teachers. So the expectation for teachers is that they work 40 hours a week, and they can shift the hours that best meet the kids' needs. That's a little more difficult to monitor on our end, but it is a possibility. So it's something I've looked at, and some teachers did automatically, their own choosing, but nothing that we did force on anybody.
One question I have for the high school, anticipating if we had to do anything longer, like, what about problem solving with lab classes? Like, if students have welding or autos? I was kind of wondering about that, because I had a high schooler, a middle schooler, and then I watched a first grader. So I saw the different engagement. Middle school, it just seems extremely natural. They're able to just manage themselves and be on. The high schooler, the classes were quite different, because it was an auto and a welding class, and it was like, what are we going to do? And then the first grader needed a lot of attention. So, but their days seemed very normal. They were exercising in the kitchen and, you know, doing a little show and tell and... But anyway, I was like, the lab classes for the high school really kind of miss out.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge. It's something to consider going forward, that those kids come in for some lab time. I know the technical colleges did that last spring. So those kids that had lab classes that would have missed out on the skills they needed for their career came in, so it's a discussion Tom and I can have, and the team can have. But we did have our construction class, since it's seven kids, co-horted for two hours, two of the blocks per day. They did meet at the house and kept working, so those kids got to keep the lab experience. In the other lab classes, science, which is the world I used to live in, that, I know our teachers now are talking about a new program called Gizmos, so let's go back to what we could use. Gizmos, which are an online lab tool to allow kids to still get the experience of a lab without actually being in the lab. So those kind of things. Welding and autos, and those are going to be the tough ones for us.
Any other question, board members? Thank you. I think we got a lot of information tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Business manager.
Good evening. I have given you your first look at the five-year budget projection, and it's not a pretty picture, the farther out that we go. But again, this year, we're, this year was a tough year to budget, because we didn't know what our actual teaching and learning would be like this year and stuff. And next year, right now, isn't any easier. We don't know if we're going to be able to get our students back that have left us. We don't know how many of them... We don't know how many of them are gonna wanna stay online, and we're not quite sure how this is all gonna turn out. So what we have done is, with the Baird model, is you put in the last five years of enrollment in by grade level. And so the first line is our September membership. And what that does is they roll forward our experience of how, how many kids have stayed and moved on to the next grade. And you can see that it's quite a drop that they're projecting would happen in '21, '22 compared to 2021. So when you watch that kind of a progression, that's gonna have major impact on us because in turn, our property values are going up quite steadily also. And so, again, the declining enrollment with the property taxes is not a good look for a school district. I have written up assumptions so that when you're away from here and you look at this, you'll say, "Well, I wonder if she, you know, budgeted for an increase in health insurance. I wonder, you know, God, aren't we gonna be done with our tax sheltered annuity program that we had?" Those kind of things are all written out and for you to reference if someone ever asks you. But as you can tell, we're in a, we're in a role right now where we are really being penalized in our equalization aid. And the state does have a program in there where you can only lose up to 15% of your aid. When I first looked at the reports and plugged the numbers in, we were supposed to lose half of our aid next year. And so the state comes back and gives us back 1.7 million, but we're still gonna be cut approximately 700,000. And the reason is, if I turned around and tried to, remember, if I lose state aid, that means it goes to the taxpayers. There's no way I could ask the taxpayers to raise the taxes up $2.4 million. 700,000 is gonna be hard enough as it is. So these are some of the things that we're looking at. I don't have any increases built in to the revenue cap on the last budget. We got $175 the one year, $179,000, or $179 per student the next year. Those were awesome increases to us, but again, nobody's talking right now. I think we're all kinda waiting to see how are we ending up this year with the budget at the state level. You can see where the reoccurring, non-reoccurring referendum is down below. And so again, we're in our third year this year, got two more years after that. But even having that 950,000, if you look out into '22, '23, we're still projecting over a million-dollar loss. The thing that's gonna happen here, and it's, it's hard to project, when you're talking these kind of big numbers, we could maybe get 20, 30, 40 kids to even stay, but we're in that trend now where we're gonna be talking some big dollars going away just because if we don't get students back, and we're not gonna grow, if we don't grow, this is the impact of what our life is gonna look like in the next five years.
One thing when I look in the, your projections is, we, even though you've done salaries at a 2% increase, because we're losing students, I'm assuming we're gonna lose staff as we go also. And that's not projected. The salaries are projected, just like if we had, we didn't lose anybody, correct?
The same number of staff as we move forward.
So, that's the only thing, that number will, that part of will shrink, I would think.
We will probably get more efficient as soon as we know more. I mean, this year, to the not knowing of how many kids might come back after they went into the ad mentum program or whatever, we kept our classes low just in case the students had the option of coming back in. Dr. Warmuth was really shocked when we got into this area of the trimester when we thought, "Well, a lot of kids would jump back in." They didn't. They didn't come back to school. And again, does that mean just because we're moving on, will they come back next year? Will a parent still keep them home because they have that option? We're just, we're not sure.
There's so many things that I'd like to talk about. I'm sorry. I've been quiet. The first thing you need to look at, revenue limits, I'm gonna, I know you've heard me talk about this, but revenue limits are totally based on the number of students that we serve. So when, when we are in a declining enrollment situation, we can anticipate that our revenues are dropping in an equal amount. There are, the, the state does use a three-year rolling average, so it's not as dramatic as it would be. There are some hold harmless provisions in the budget that help us when you think about the revenue limit. So we're a declining, declining enrollment district, and we're declining pretty rapidly. As a matter of fact, I was looking at the Applied Population Lab that we had done last year, study with UW-Madison. And it really looks like our enrollment, because Baird uses a different model. They use a mortality model, a more actuarial model than the Applied Population Lab does. It really looks like we're in between that two- and five-year projection. So that's kind of the, the two-year projection was kind of a worst-case scenario, if you'd like to go back and look at that. The second thing that Ronnie mentioned just briefly is the equalized aid side of the formula. So revenue limit sets how much we get based on student head count. So is our student head count and some other, it's a formula. But as our student population declines, the revenue that we generate declines. The other side of the formula is the equalized aid formula. And that's where Ronnie was talking about, like, a really sharp drop. And that's the mix between shared revenue and local property taxes. And this year, without the hold harmless agreement in place, our shared sources would've declined by 50%. And so that would've had to been made up by our local property taxpayers. So that's really significant for our district. So what's happening is our property taxes, and I think this year, it was overall in the district, our, our property values increased by 3, 3.81%, so almost 4% across our district. So the property value keeps going up, our student enrollment keeps declining. So it appears that we have more and more property behind every student we serve, which changes that mix in the equalized aid side of the formula. So it's, it's, it's almost, we're considered to be in the double-negative situation. Our enrollment is declining, which gives us less resources to use on an annual basis, and our property values continue to increase, which looks like we have more property behind each student we serve. So the mix between shared revenues and local property taxes keep changing. Right now, we're at about 70/30. Is that an approximate? So 70% of our funding comes from local property taxes, 30% comes from shared sources, the state. If that changes dramatically, in a couple of years, we'll be looking at 85% potentially, and this is all a guesstimate, but it's a good guesstimate right now. 85% of our funding coming from local property taxes and only 15% coming from shared sources, which is, is gonna be dramatic for our taxpayers. And I'll say once again, my personal opinion, the funding formula was established in 1992, the '92-'93 school year, and it's broken. It doesn't serve the majority of school districts across Wisconsin well right now.
That's all I kinda have.
And on that happy note.
Does anybody have questions for Ronnie? Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you.
District of Business Manager report.
All right, I have two things that I'd like to talk about. The first is, we have a board member recognition from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Mr. Pease has reached Level 4 out of 5. There are five levels from the state. It's actually very impressive. Very few people have the opportunity to reach this level. Points are awarded based on attending meetings, attending conventions, working on committees, and those kinds of board-related activities. And it's an honor to recognize Mr. Pease tonight with a Level 4 out of 5 award. You don't see these very often. So thank you, Mr. Pease. The second thing I'd like to talk tonight about, and we'll probably have this as a voting item next month, but I wanted to talk just a little bit to get the board thinking about snow days in the future. And there is quite a debate among other school boards and school districts across the state about whether snow days are necessary anymore. There is some debate about the value of play and the excitement of snow days for students that would be lost. Having grown up in Madison, which rarely has a snow day, I was always frustrated that our neighbors that were very close had snow days, and I blame my parents for not living in Verona or Middleton. They were right down the road, because they had snow days. But this is, this is a real issue. And we know that we have the capability now of moving to NTI if we were to have inclement weather issues. But we also know that there is a, appears to be a mental and physical health benefit for actually having a periodic snow day. So it's an information item tonight. We can talk about it. But we'll probably take it to a vote next month.
I think sometimes a snow day is just as therapeutic for staff as it is for students as well. I mean, there's, every staff I know is, I always look forward to a snow day or even put a pool on a snow day. I'm not telling anything anybody doesn't already know. So, snow days are one of the, they made a movie about snow days, for gosh sakes. So there is a value to snow days, I believe.
We also are concerned about the instructional time that our students missed last spring as well, and the potential of making that up during inclement weather days. So this is a debate that school boards are having across the state, and I'm gonna be asking you to take a vote on this next month. Some districts have elected to split the difference. So if the, they're, they're giving students and families the first two of four potential days built in their calendar as snow days, and then the rest will convert to instructional days. But it's something you should think about.
Wouldn't it be, when we get back to normal, when whatever happens, wouldn't it be really hard to pick one day and say, "We're going NTI tomorrow, because it's gonna snow"?
Well, you'd probably find all at around 6:00 AM. So, I mean, it's, it would be somewhat challenging.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you know a snow was coming, 25 inches are coming one day, you could just say, "Tomorrow's gonna be NTI day."
Yeah.
But, you know, oftentimes-
Wouldn't that be hard for the teachers to, just out of the blue, do one day of NTI?
It would probably be, it would present some challenges, yes.
More at the lower levels, correct?
I think we can also think about other things, though, too. Like, we had the great polar vortex with the really wind chill days. I mean, where that lasted forever, so I think that's an interesting scenario. I think, right now, too, I feel like probably our students and our staff are trained to kind of take everything with them. I know in my place of employment, we've instituted that rule, too. Like, we do these rotations, and some people are in for five days a week, but I said, "Take your stuff with you every day, because you never know when you're gonna get the call that you're a close contact or something." So to a certain extent, while I don't think that they would like it, I think some of them are prepared. I don't know. I mean, I kinda like the idea of splitting the difference. I think ultimately, if it gets to days where we're gonna lose days of instruction, it really makes sense to just do the NTI. Not that it's everybody's favorite, but I think it gives us a good option.
We're certainly getting better at NTI. I mean, we know that. We're not necessarily engaging 100% of our students 100% of the time, but comparing our last experience to what last spring looks like, we know that we're, we're learning and improving on what we're providing to students and families in that regard.
I would agree to some snow days, but one year we had like 11 because we had a great deal of ice and low freezing where the wind chill was 30 and low. And we lost a lot of time. So I agree to making sure that there are a couple built in, but when it gets to be a point where we need to instruct, I think we should.
Any other comments? We'll put this on the agenda for next month.
Yeah.
At this time, will, is there a consideration to adjournment to closed session? Is there a consideration to adjournment to a closed session? Is there a consideration to adjournment to closed session? Hearing no motion, we'll go on to, to the consent agenda. Is our motion to approve the consent agenda?
So long.
Tell Joanne?
Yes.
Kent, was that you?
Yes.
Motion made by Joanne Segman by Kent to approve the consent agenda. On it, we have tonight Cheyenne Smith, the Secretary at AFE, Lane Roseberry to registrar, Gretchen Simler to Special Education Para-Professional at AFE, Kay Parham, Special Education Para-Professional at AFE. The co-curricular contracts, minute, meeting minutes from 11:09, and then November bills. Discussion.
Is that position for registrar the one that's in the central office with Stacy?
Yes.
That's Ally Dyce.
Because we had a resignation, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, let's start this vote with Kent.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
And my board just passes 9-0. New business, school safety plans.
And Crystal will come and talk about the safety plans across the district.
Good evening. Michelle neglected to tell you that it was pajama day at school, so her and I have family pajamas on, which we are still wearing at the moment. What you are looking at is a revision to our school safety plans that were previously submitted to the school board. What you're gonna notice right now is those plans look similar regardless of what building you are looking at. The only difference that you are going to see is the shelter areas listed are per building and very building-specific. What you should know about these plans is there was a community group brought together to review the current plans that we had in place that included our local sheriff's department, our county, our city police department, Health and Human Services, as well as school district staff members as well. We utilize some of the language that our students and staff are trained in. For example, you've heard about the run, hide, fight, which was not previously spelled out in our safety response plans. Additionally, some of our district staff members were trained in safety response protocol through the Department of Justice, and we were able to bring that knowledge back to this plan as well. The formatting that you see in this current, this current plan, we were actually able to borrow from another area. So CISA 5 did work with a five-county consortium, and this is the same model that they used with those counties as well. So what you are seeing here as far as changes, it's very personnel-specific. So if you are able to look in those forms, you're going to notice, for example, it may say "shelter in place", and the first person it is describing is a principal or a designee for the principal, and their duties as they would respond to that. You're also gonna see support staff, custodians, our office secretaries, our teachers. What should they be doing specifically, and not everyone's duties altogether. Again, you're also gonna see that written language here. So you're gonna see the announcement, the actual announcement that we are asking someone to make if there was an immediate danger to the building. That is because you oftentimes are going to see during an emergency, people are not going to be thinking very clearly. So this language is spelled out for them, what they're going to say and how many times they need to repeat that over the announcements. You are also going to see the language used in this is our language. It's going to be those emergency procedures that we describe. So you can see on the very first page, we're talking about evacuations, the run, hide, fight process, when we use an administrative hold or when we use a shelter in place, which is the actual language that our students and staff are trained in as well. And then finally, at the end, we were able to add on the reunification plan. Our Pupils Services Department, as well as Members of Health and Human Services, worked together to determine what that might look like if we were to go into a situation where we needed to reunite students with their guardians. And you'll notice in here that they looked at a double gate system. So that would be a system where we have one adult waiting area and we keep the students separate from them until we can verify that that is their legal guardian. them until we can verify that that is their legal guardian. We have the documentation listed in here that we would use and get the signatures, as well as the personnel and materials that would be required for that reunification plan. What you do not see in here is the county locations that we would use to make that reunification happen. We don't want to make that information public in case there were a threat to the students or staff in the building. Any questions at all?
Questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lucas.
Have all the people been identified for their credentials? So, there's a lot of, you know, like the runners and, um, I'm trying to remember all these different titles, but have the people been identified in their credentials and anything?
So, I think what he is asking specifically about is the reunification plan, and if those individuals have been identified, the job duties have been identified, but say we were in an active shooter situation, we don't know who would be able to respond. So, that's why you have a commander there who then would designate each individual, provide them with their job description card.
Okay. And then, is there, I'm assuming there's the yearly CIDI, you know, training for the students, or, you know, what you guys talk through, any items with that?
That comes from our school resource officers, and they do, twice a year, go through those protocols with our students and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I need a motion. So moved.
I'll second that.
Jeff? And Jeff. Motion made by Jeff, second by Jim, to approve the, to approve the school safety plans for the district as presented to the board. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Jim.
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
And my vote is just, passes 9-0. Moving on, assembly management software.
Whoop, you missed the suspension.
Oh, I'm sorry. Suspension of graduation requirements.
We're asking you to suspend the graduation requirement for the class of 2021. We know that they're not going to be able to accumulate the credits based on last spring that are stipulated in our policy, and we'll probably be asking this for the next three years, just so you're aware, but we're doing class by class.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, you said something?
I was going to ask if, is this to look at the graduation requirement for credits? Is that what we're suspending?
Hey, Kathy, let me get the motion on the floor, and then I'll let you ask that question, okay?
Oh, thank you.
Jeff, who was the second, I'm sorry?
I was.
All right. Motion made by Jeff, second by Joanne, to suspend policy 5460, graduation requirement for a class of 2021. Okay, Kathy, go ahead and ask your question.
My question was, I know we did this last spring as well for the class of 2020. Does this have to deal with reducing the number of credits for this particular class and perhaps for the next three?
Correct, and Kevin Moore has stepped to the microphone, so I'd like him to address that, if that's okay.
Yes, our current credit requirement is 28 credits, and we want to reduce that to 25.5, so kids that were unable to get their two-and-a-half credits third trimester last year because of reasons unforeseen, whether they didn't have internet access, they didn't have the supports at home, they had to start working or whatever it was, so we're trying to hold them harmless and allow them not to have to, not to have to earn those 2.5 credits. Most students did, or at least part of them, but there are a few that struggled, so we don't want to see them hurt because of what happened in March.
Can they get some credits back through credit recovery yet?
Absolutely, so they could take summer school, they can, they can take an extra learn-to-earn or half credit each trimester, it's just that we don't want to, there's, there's some circumstances where kids can't, and we don't want that student to not graduate.
With our virtual, is there a way that they could recover some of those credits at home also?
Yes, so they, they can take online credits if they wanted to, and we have the Play-Doh program that our online students are using right now. They can do that during the summer. Those classes, they can actually work on all year if they wanted to, so that's an option.
Because that's a big part of the, the formula for our grade, so.
Yes. What, what we won't excuse because of state law are the four credits of English and three credits of math, three credits of science, so we really, our focus with those students that are short of credits to focus on those core classes, but they might not, some students might not be able to hit all the electives.
Okay.
Just for future reference, could you give us, like, an actual data about numbers of how many kids this might be? If you don't know off the top of your head, I don't expect you to know off the top of your head.
No, we can, and it's just tough to know because students are in different spots, so some students had until the first trimester to finish up the incompletes that they might have had from third try, but I would guess it's truly less than 10 kids that will be affected by it.
We should know in June. I mean, June would be a better time to provide-
Yeah, I'm not saying like right now, I just, it would be nice to know, like, how many kids we're actually talking about, if we're going to suspend this policy, especially moving forward, like, hopefully it's not more than 10 ever.
Are we struggling with some kids online getting credits or failing credits?
The current virtual students?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we're struggling with students, you know, in particular, students that weren't necessarily making progress with their chronologically aged peers when they were in person, so we're continuing to engage and connect with those families to make sure that this is a viable option for them.
And there, there are some students seeing great success, but there are some students that just don't, aren't making the progress.
Do we encourage them to come back to school if they're-
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
At any time throughout the trimester, we'll, at the high school especially, because we want to make sure we have room for them, but we also want to make sure they can earn credits and be on track for graduation.
Okay.
So, this, this suspension of policy is purely for the third trimester of last year.
Okay.
Not going, not for our trimesters going forward.
Not going forward. With that, is there any more questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Lena.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
And my vote is just, passes 9-0. Now the assembly management software.
And we're recommending tonight that the board consider approving a contract to purchase the assembly software program. There are other school districts, including a couple of neighbors of ours, that are utilizing this program. It's a tool really that will help us manage board meeting minutes and data and creating agendas. We can use it across the district for creating agendas. It's also a tool that stores plans. For example, the safety plans could be stored within this software program, and I know that Ronnie and Stacy have seen it work in another district. Ronnie has watched some videos and been through it to a live person training. I've watched some videos that are connected as well, and we believe that it's a data management tool that would have high utilization across our district and make many people's lives easier from a storage and retrieval perspective of information. And it's available to the public as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jeff, second by Joanne, to approve the contract for assembly management software. Discussion.
I have a question. I listened to the videos by Dr. Curtis Jones and also from Dr. Vic Wilson, and one of the questions that, one of the superintendents raised is, before you purchase anything like that, you have to answer this question. Can you not do the things that this software will offer? And I guess that's my question. Are we not able to do the things that this new software will bring to us?
And, and the answer is going to be mixed. Can we do items? Yes, we can create board agendas, but where those board agendas, for example, are stored? Can we create safety plans? Yes, but where those safety plans are accessible on our district website is another issue. Our Google world, Google Drives and Google Docs is overwhelming at best. A lot of that information isn't available to the public, and this, this software package would allow us to help the public have better access to the materials we want them to have access to than what we currently can do.
Okay, because I thought that was a pretty legitimate question. Both superintendents were very excited about bringing it to the districts, and especially, I think it was the one, Dr. Curtis Jones, in his district, it sounded like ours, you know, very similar to our district, so I just, I thought that was a legitimate question to, to ask. And remind me again, does this contract have to be renewed yearly?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I have two questions about the contract.
Go ahead.
So, there's, it looks like there's $1,000 that we save if it gets signed by tomorrow. If we assume that we approve this tonight, will that be signed by tomorrow so we can get that savings?
Yes.
Okay. And then my other question is, what happens if we don't renew, you know, a couple years down the road? Do we, what happens to all the information that's stored? Do we, do we get that stored somewhere else, or, you know, do we lose that? I'm just worried about, you know, what if they jack up the price of this, and then we're in a position where we no longer want it, do we lose information down the road?
And, and that's the issue with a lot of software programs that we're utilizing. The data is ours, we'd have to spend time mining that data and putting it into a different platform.
Okay. Do they, do they offer longer-term contracts?
I don't know the answer to that.
For reduction, okay.
It doesn't, no, Ronnie's shaking her head, no.
I never-
Oh, she doesn't, she doesn't know. I did not, I was not able to, I got called out of the live person training that Ronnie and Stacy were able to, to see, so I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I think a year of a contract is good, just because then we know if we really want it or not after that year.
Yeah, I think it's good for now. I was thinking longer term. If, say, we really like this tool, if we can kind of price protect ourselves a little bit, it probably would make sense to do that.
The, the tool was developed in the south, and, and we have access to a district that's nearby that's utilized this very successfully, and another district that we're aware of that's relatively close, so we can, that have been using this for a while already, so we can utilize their expertise as we're implementing this as well, and how they use it, which is, I believe, a positive.
Any other comments? With that, we will start this vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Mandy?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
My vote is just, passes 9-0. Middle school roof maintenance repair.
Mr. Ringer is at the microphone. I'm going to ask him to talk a little bit about the issue that we're having at the middle school and the two proposals that we have in front of us tonight that hopefully will relieve that issue.
Yes, good evening. The roof issue that we're referring to isn't exactly a roof issue, but it's referencing a water leak that's over the gymnasium entrance doors at the middle school. And in working with the maintenance staff, trying to come up with the best solution in their efforts that they've taken to try to find out what the issue is, investigation with bids from masons, tuck pointers, and roofing contractors to really try to isolate what the problem was, made the determination that it's, that the leak over that gym entrance door is created from deteriorating defective mortar joints along that exterior east wall portion, as well as portions of the north wall. That water, it's finding its way through the cracks and getting inside the concrete masonry units, and also those concrete masonry units are scaling, runs along in, inside those blocks where it pools up at the entrance of the doors of the gymnasium. Our custodian staff, when these events happen, I've only got to see one of them, it was on my first day, actually. Tom gave me a walk-around, and we had a pretty heavy east wind rain, and that water was pooling up there, and the custodians have to lay down dust mops when it's coming in there. So, I, I believe that it's in our best interest to get this fixed. It's definitely by far the, the worst leak that we have of any of the buildings. To make sure we're maintaining the health and safety of the students and staff, and then, you know, any spectators that are coming to the gym for scheduled events. So, as far as the joint and block work, I received two bids. One was for RD Woods, and we've done some work with him in the past from me looking through the records. He's out of West Alice. And then Dave Miller Company, local here. I proposed that we choose Dave Miller. He is local, but he was $1,000 cheaper than RD Woods, and he also included the north portion of that wall, which I didn't get from RD Woods, so that's where we're at with that.
To give you an example, if we were to have an event, a basketball game or a volleyball game in that gym, we couldn't use the entrance that we normally use for spectators. The water literally, the day that we saw it, Sean, your first day, and that was not planned, by the way, it just happened that it was raining that day.
Stand right there.
Yeah. The water is literally, like, showering in over the door entrance to the gym that's closest to the, to the middle school office. It, it needs to be addressed.
When will this project start? So, both contractors said they wouldn't be able to do anything until springtime snow melt-off, just due for the concrete curing process.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mandy? Motion made by Jeff, second by Mandy, to approve Dave Miller's bid for maintenance repair of the middle school roof, not to exceed $15,000. Discussion. I will start with the discussion is, I've seen Dave Miller's work at the Friendship Dam. If anybody has seen the improvements there, I feel very comfortable with his work. I mean, that, he has turned that building around roof-wise and duck point-wise, so I'm kind of excited that we are going local and he's doing, doing the work, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Dave Miller's handwritten bid doesn't break down the costs the way the other one did. Is, are we missing that, or was that given? Number two-
Let him answer that question first, okay, Kathy? Sean, did you hear that question?
Yes. So, he includes the east wall, when he refers to the east wall, he's referring to the whole wall itself, not like RD Woods where he is referring to that wall in sections, as in the center, the north side, and the south side. We've got some scaling all along that wall. The worst portion is the part that is leaking over the gymnasium. But as far as the breakdown goes, besides that, Dave Miller talks about the north end of the wall. Definitely RD Woods was a little bit more defined in his work. From what I've gathered from Dave and from his write-up here, he completes the same type of work with its, with his distance, how far he's going in on that grinding process, and as well as seeing some of his work that he's done in the community.
Does that answer your question, Kathy?
It, it's difficult to understand, but if, if he feels confident, then I'm okay. My other question is, the second bid showed a guarantee, a three-year guarantee, and I did not read that at all in Miller's proposal. Is there a guarantee of work?
I have not talked with him about that, but that's definitely something that I can try to gather out of him before we get started with this, if he's going to hold us to the same type of guarantee that we would get from the other bid. I think that's a safe ask.
Because I think a guarantee should be in writing.
I agree.
In case we have any kind of legal recourse.
I think that's something that we can get written up before we- I think that's something that we can get written up before we proceed with the work.
And my third question is, we, we have a fifteen thousand limit on the project, but both of the bids came well under fifteen thousand. I was just.
In talking, we went with that number just in case there would turn into be any add-ons, something that wasn't found during the work process that needed to be added on, just to give us a little bit of a safety buffer, but.
So you basically wouldn't have to come back to us for, like, for two thousand dollars if some tough point wasn't found, or?
And Ronnie, and Ronnie, Ronnie, and this is Tom, Kathy, Ronnie and Sean and I met, and we talked about trying to figure out a reasonable number, and that's what we came up with.
Okay. I just wondered, because both of them came under, almost under like ten-something. But, and you answered my question, Rick, when I, I wondered whether Miller had done any other projects of this nature, and when you started out explaining about the dam, that answered that question. Because other than, I know he's known for his tuck pointing, but I was wondering if he's done other projects.
Jeff, can you add in there that he shouldn't start work until we get that guarantee? You say you made the motion, or you just like the motion away?
Yeah, that's fine.
Add that in there?
Please.
Mandy, you okay with that?
Yes.
So we'll add in there, real work will be performed until the figure guarantee is given, okay? That helps you, Kathy?
Yep, that, that makes me feel better. I know we did some work on a roof a while back and had to come back at it because the work was not done appropriately, and without a guarantee, we're stuck.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I was just wondering how long the project's expected to take.
Does Ronnie have any idea how long it's going to take? That Lucas would like to know.
It was estimated at a couple of weeks. Hopefully, you know, this will be done during non-school.
Yeah.
Learning periods. I know in talking with Tom, too, he wanted to make sure we're going to conduct any of that type of work that we're getting it done during, not during the school year.
You got that, Lucas?
Yep.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll start this vote with Kathy. No, I'm sorry. Mandy, Mandy's first.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And my vote has just passed as nine zero. Fleet, vehicle fleet reduction.
And Sean is going to stay at the microphone.
All right. I believe you guys have our fleet inventory currently. We do have a fair amount of vehicles, and looking to sell four of these fleet vehicles that have higher mileage or be, getting to the point where they're deteriorating or rusty. Two of the vehicles, number 12 and 13, are listed on there. They're both 2005 Chevy Uplanders, high mileage, very rusty. The big part of both of these vehicles is the bottom radiator mounts are starting to rot away and now deemed kind of a safety hazard. I've gotten a couple of bids for repair, and the repairs far go past what we most likely sell them for. Also, 1997, number two, which was used at Grand Marsh, it was dump truck, plow, no longer needed in our current footprint. This truck's still usable, but also deteriorating, rust in the box, there's no tailgate on it. It's well over a hundred thousand miles. Number 10 is a Chevy Venture Van. This is another vehicle. It's very rusty, high mileage, got rodent issues, and deemed unreliable. This vehicle's since been replaced with a lower mileage reliable van. But at this time, and then researching with the department heads and the school staff, I don't see the need to replace the lost vehicles. Three of these vehicles were dedicated to Grand Marsh, including that dump truck, and then one vehicle was stationed there. We had a vehicle that was at AFE that would transport students to Grand Marsh. That would leave us with one vehicle that would be in question, and with our current fleet and its usage, which for me, it's a hard way to evaluate being in COVID, but at this time, I don't see us needing a replacement of these. I have talked with Ronnie about our current funds and whether or not we would be able to replace a vehicle if need be, but these ones are definitely safety hazards. As far as selling these vehicles, going with the Wisconsin Auction Surplus, it's a pretty effective website to try to sell municipal vehicles, police, fire, and hopefully we're generating a better vision, getting more people to look at them and hopefully get as much money as possible for them.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Joanne?
I'll second it.
Jim?
Yes.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jim to approve the auction sale of four district Discussion. Go ahead, Jeff.
Have we looked at the potential of setting up a fund then for when we sell used equipment to fund purchase of new vehicles? Just to, like, we're talking about school force in a way. I know the county has been really big on that with Casey as their manager. They did it with solid waste.
They do it for all vehicles.
Yeah, and all vehicles now. I think all the departments do that. Is that something that we can look at potentially? Because, I mean, our, we've got some old vehicles in our fleet, and my, and I think I said this a couple of years ago, my concern is the maintenance cost, and we're kind of beating a dead horse with a stick. It's time to let some of these vehicles go. We get a special price through the state on vehicles. We can turn our vehicles relatively quick and make that money back essentially in selling those vehicles because of the discount that we get from the state, and start rotating our vehicles a little more often so that we don't have those maintenance costs that eat on our bottom line.
We have quite a fleet, just a number of vehicles for our student population and the buildings we serve. Ronnie, do you want to address that? I don't, we have not talked about setting up a fund, or at least I'm not aware of that, so.
Can't hear?
Oh, can you come to the microphone? I'm sorry. Thank you, Kathy, I apologize.
We can do that, and we can also, at the end of the year, assign money to certain funds, you know, so that even if we just close it into the general fund, it's still over into a vehicle-type fund, and then that way, when it's time to buy them, we can pull the money out or use our current budget if it still works.
Right. It's like a savings account for vehicles that we don't have, like, an emergency expense of twenty-five thousand dollars and saying, okay, where are we going to get the twenty-five from? It's already sitting there in that account from the sale of used vehicles and us putting seed money in there every year or whatever the case may be through budget process.
Sure.
I think the truck we bought for snow plowing, that'd be one that we know we're going to have to replace in four or five years because of the salt it takes and stuff that we could put, if we put five thousand dollars away every year, we'd have that ready to go in six years, so.
Right.
It's something we should look at.
And it would be nice to, you know, and I know you're brand new, but a plan to, you know, develop a plan, and I would strongly urge you to get ahold of the county before Casey leaves in January.
He's already gone.
Oh, he's already gone.
December 12th. But I have his number. We can make sure we can call.
Or, you know, people at Solid Waste or whatever, and get their insight in how they really develop that plan to so that it's kind of self-sufficient.
They do that for every department now.
There'll be a school fund for this. It's not going to be challenging for us. There'll be a specific number that we'd use in the Wisconsin uniform, accounting, the WUFAR system.
One thing I'd like to try to strengthen our use policy of the vehicles as well, and kind of ensure that after use, especially with some of these vehicles, once they get used in this winter weather and they sit around for maybe a month or two without use after they've been on a bad road that's been just sprayed with salt, is making sure that we're getting on a wash plan for these, because, I mean, these really, yes, it's high mileage. It's not super-high mileage, but when they sit with salt on them and they haven't been cleaned, they rot apart.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll start with Lucas.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mandy.
Yes.
My vote has just passed as nine zero. TC Networks contract.
Ronnie's going to come back up to the microphone, but Ronnie's negotiated what I believe is a very beneficial contract with TC Networks as we move into the future. It's a one-year contract.
When we, when we did our three-year contract with them, we had the ability to have two one-year extensions, and so this year, when we asked, you know, what would be our next possible extension due to E-rate, we need to bid that out a little bit, and when we put it out there, they came back at 1.3% increase, which I think was really reasonable considering they could have gone up to 4% in their contract. And so, you know, I thought that was just a really good price to extend it at least, especially during this time when we've been, it's such a technology world right now, and we're just scrambling, it seems like, to try to make sure that we have a lot of stuff, and they're really pushing through the technology and everything else. It would be good to extend it, just because they're familiar to us right now.
Questions for Ronnie? Go ahead, Jeff.
How would you rate their service up to date?
Okay, how's the service, Ronnie?
It's good. You know, I think part of it that we're going through a little bit, and Dr. Warmuth and I have talked about it, is it's, we don't have that expert on the inside for the school district, and so we rely so heavily on them that that is the one area that I think we're weak on, is, you know, understanding sometime exactly what we're doing.
So here's what, TC Networks is a backbone and device entity. They help with our networks, getting the internet up and running, APs up, making sure we're able to project what we need to project at meetings, and then getting all our devices initialized and helping us order those and keeping those inventoried and things like that. What we're missing, and what Ronnie is talking about, is a bridge between the backbone work that TC Networks does and the instructional technology piece. So we have some teachers that are very tech savvy. There's a couple at the middle school, Alyssa Mansell and Sarah Lee, I'll use their names. They do a great job of helping the middle school staff with the instructional technology piece, but we don't have that reaching out necessary. Mike Palm does a really good job at the high school, but across the district, that's kind of missing. And it's really hit or miss based on the skill set that a few of our teachers happen to have. So that bridge is a difficult thing, and that's not what TC Networks does. That would be more our responsibility and working with those key stakeholders that are staff persons to help make that, that bridge occur for all of our staff.
I do think, though, that Jeff, that part of our, what really worked for us before is we had Jim Gullrude here, and we had, he'd been our employee for, you know, 15 years. And so we had that bridge, even though he was their employee, but he knew us so well and he still worked with us, and Jim has taken another job somewhere. So losing that inside guy, even though he was for them, he was still for us, and it was, that I think is when it's really come to light what we're exactly kind of missing.
So I thought when they presented that they, I mean, I remember we had two presenters, and one said they would have a coach, and actually, I thought they said they would also have a coach for teachers. Is there somewhere to look for a place that offers also like what we're needing, like a instructional coach with technology?
I mean, that would be something that we could, we could go out to bid. I think what we're recommending at this point in time for the 21, 22 school year is to stay with TC Networks. If you're asking Ronnie and I to go out to bid at some point during the next school year and add something like that to the contract, or potentially look, as our staffing patterns change, it might be more viable for us to reassign one of our internal staff persons, knows the district, knows what we're contending with, to help with bridging the instructional technology piece. But it's certainly something we could explore in the future. We think right now, just with the unknowns associated as we move into the next school year, it's in our best interest as a school district to maintain this contract. But at the same time, if you'd like to direct us in a motion to go out to bid during the next school year, we certainly could do that.
I have a question. When we first contracted them in 2018, we locked them in for three years. Now we're going to have to contract yearly, and they said they could actually bump it up to 4%.
And they did this year, they only bumped it up 1.3.
So that initial three-year contract, was that just a one-time deal?
No, I think that they would, if we went back to them and said, do you want to renegotiate another three-year contract or a five-year, I think they would work with us and do that. I think initially, they want to lock in to that three years to make sure that, you know, they're, they put some investment coming here and doing stuff. I think that we could negotiate anything that we really wanted to. That would only benefit them also.
What does the board wish to do?
I'll make a motion to approve TC Network's contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Jeff, to approve the contract for TC Network. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Mandy.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
And my vote has just passed as nine zero. With that, is there any reason not to adjourn? We're adjourned at 8:27. Thank you.